Next, I'd like some approval of the agenda. Councilor Ellsworth, Councilor McMyrdle, all in favor? There, thank you. I hope you got any community comments or feedback.
Ron Natachuk, 20 Ash. I want to speak to 9.3 on the agenda tonight, which is the levy by law. For those who don't know, levy means taxes. I went through the the financial plan and I see in there a lot of senselessly optimistic numbers in the in the revenue side of it. I see eight million will be coming out of the reserves, which will put that that number down to at or below is required by law that we maintain. That financial plan looks to me like a good start to breaking the bank. Thanks.
Thank you, sir, and please feel free, everybody, to come out on April the 29th and get the whole financial plan. You'll be able to see it line by line. Thank you very much. Any other comments or community feedback? Yes?
What about property tax rears? We're going after 2017, 18, 19, and 20, correct? For outstanding past non-tax duties? For property tax, sorry. Let me repeat that. Awesome. Okay. Taxes that are in the rears for property taxes. They're going after 17, 18, 19, and 20. If you don't have those paid, you walk through the public tax, right? The property tax to hold up. I'm reading some of these notes for one. The Minnesota Tax Act 365 1A, each year, the council must offer sale. Every property in the municipality act has tax years for this designated area. City capitol here 2020 to be the designated year for the next tax sale. Properties with taxes in the rear prior to this date will be included. The purpose of this letter is to inform the person is in rears and that they have taken steps to pay 2017, 18, 19 years of full, on May 31st, 2021. After this date, we'll be sending accounts to tax service to start procedures for a tax sale. The question they want to know is, how can their home be upward cash sale? If they have a $0 balance for 17, 18, and then 19, they have a rear, a rears, and 20, 20 years. Is when does a tax sale implemented? It's after two years, three years, two years, plus a year, one year, plus a year?
Jenny, do you have a thought?
I'm sure so tax can go for the previous year's taxes. So in 20, in the current, we can go up to 2019. So it's kind of one year in a year's time frame, and then it's anything that's due 2019 and previous. So once they pay off the 2019 and previous portion, then maybe remove them tax sale.
So you can go after tax sales in the 2019 or previous? No, no previous, just they own 2019 taxes and 2020 taxes. So you can go after their home on May 31st if they don't have it.
As on May 31st, it gets into tax service, who is it, our tax sale manager? So there's a process on the BMS block. There's a number of days until a tax actually occurs, which would likely be pushed until 2022 based almost the timeframe. So there is still a timeframe that they can pay that off up until May 31st. They paid off, they would incur no additional expenses. So once it gets into tax service, there's an expense at each step of the process. So if they pay by May 31st, they don't get any taxes. If it isn't paid by May 31st, does get to the tax service. They start incurring additional costs, but it doesn't go, the sale doesn't happen. I don't have on the top, I have a number of days from when the notice is given to the tax process, but I think it's 200, over 200 days till that timeframe happens. So they still have that timeframe to pay off all of the taxes and those 2019 and previous orders.
So somebody else kept, they just, so somebody else's taxes in 20. So they paid their taxes last year up to 2018. So 2019, not even a whole year. They only have six months to catch up on 2019. Because they viewed, because they wanted to take the house last year and they paid their taxes up to September 30. There yet? So now, within six months, you're giving them another notice saying that their house could be taken away from your taxes again.
Yeah, so council passed a resolution that all taxes previous to 2019 are subject to taxes. So that any property that owns 2019, 2020 are
Thank you. I just want to make note for the minutes that Melanie Cutler was the speaker. I forgot to get you to say your name, so thank you.
Sorry.
Any more community comments or feedback?
One year was during the morning DNR ready next. I listened to your YouTube meeting. There are a few weeks ago, I put in a tender. And Jeff Fountain. He spoke about DNR ready next is illegally not allowed to pour concrete in this town because I don't have an environmental permit. And if you want to revoke it, revoke it, doesn't matter. But on here today, saying 2015, he sent me a letter. I called him up. I went down to his office. He said the competition is complaining to him big time. So I sat down, I talked to him. And he said he went and needed an environmental permit. I said, how much cost? He gave me the information and all that. He said five, 10 grand. And I asked, what do I need an environmental permit? Is it because molten concrete is throwing dust outside during, got a dry rot and all that? So he said he'll get back to me. Which he never. When I puts out this city here, I've been business for 16 years and I put a lot of money in this company. And I say, you want to revoke it, revoke it. I never had it past four or five years, but no one's going to pass over me. Because I don't forget, I keep the papers. I keep them. But for him to say that should be enough. He say what he wants, he don't work for the provincial government. No one from the provincial government got a hold of me. I follow Mantle Rhythm Association, Dean never asked me for the environmental permit. I follow their rules. But now I just put it in last week again. I got copies here from 2015 that I made up going to Saturday, waiting for him to get back to us. Me, Dick Burns, has been sitting down Dick Burns' office for the last six years. Next time, even the next time I got to come down here or I got a deal with the city supervisor over that yard, you won't hear from me. You don't hear from my lawyer. Because you got environment lower there. You got that compost from that old firm over there. You got that in front of our place over there. When you turn it over, it sticks for about three months. And we got to breathe that in. When Wayne was older, he told me right to my face. He said, when you take over the dump, you'll move it. And never been moved. So I'm going to leave it at that because I don't want to get involved in any more with the city. If you got, somebody going to talk to me again, call me up. Not go on YouTube.
Thank you, sir. We will take the vendor advisement and administration is heard. Okay.
Yes, I'm not a mayor.
No, this is only
Yeah.
Yeah.
The council is not speaking.
Yeah.
I see point of order. I thought the delegation of councilors were like speaking.
We're just, this, we're done here for tonight. We've heard this presentation. Administration will get back to you, sir.
All right, and tell your councilors that we know that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay. Any other comments, many comments, feedback? Thank you. Seeing that, we'll continue. Six is the adoption of minutes, 6.1 public hearing for conditional use. 001 dash 21, April 12th, 2021. Resolution 2021 055. Moved by Councillor Ellsworth, seconded by Councillor Colber. Here resolve the minutes of public hearing for conditional use number 001 dash 21, held in council chamber, city hall, council Manitoba on Monday, April 12th, 2021. He adopted a circulated. Administration?
Nothing further.
Over the question, and all those in favor? Thank you. Is adoption of minutes of the regular council meeting of April the 12th, 2021. Resolution 2021 056. Moved by Deputy Mayor Wong, seconded by Councillor Colber. The resolve that the minutes from the regular council meeting held in council chamber, city hall, council Manitoba on Monday, April 12th, 2021. Be adopted as circulated. Administration?
Nothing further.
Anything for the council? Over the question, all those in favor? 7.1 is correspondence is the letter from Danielle Adams, our MOA for Thompson, and James Moses MLE for St. Bacell. In regard to the community economic development frozen funding for non-fishing entrepreneurs. So I received this letter. It just sort of asks a question about our Community Economic Development Fund from the province. Dear Minister Iker, we are very concerned that they hear the community economic development funding is still frozen for the non-fish entrepreneurs for many years. CEDF is needed for recovery in the north, both from economic downturn due to COVID-19 pandemic and from recent employee layoffs by local industry. Many people in the north would be like to open a business or expand their businesses. And CEDF is one of the few places a new business owner can get a loan for over $150,000. Not having CEDF available to lend money to many skilled and talented people in northern Manitoba is a clear barrier for them to becoming entrepreneurs. CEDF has a very good track record with lending money. Most of their loans are prepaid because CEDF has good policy and support for business. CEDF investing in northern businesses undoubtedly helps to grow the local northern economy. The north needs support during this time of economic recovery and we ask that the government unfreeze the non-fishing funding for CEDF so that the north can recovery from both COVID-19 and the layoffs. This is an urgent matter and for northern, as of northern entrepreneurs are easily looking to CEDF to help grow their businesses. Thank you for your time and on this important matter, we look forward to hearing from you. Basically, CEDF has, is been in a government change. It's coming two years now. They are supporting agency for new businesses and take there. The lending part of that has got a moratorium and has been frozen. In the north, they thought it important with the money they had to keep the fishing loans and that are all through the north from South Grand Rapids up or that. And the other businesses that go forward to CEDF are actually being supported by different banks and different recommendations. And they're helping with business plans and the such. So moving forward, CEDF is taking a different look, but they are listening to all letters like this. So if anybody has concerns with CEDF, it is requested as board members that we let people know to send it to governments and to our boards, so we know what's happening. So CEDF is alive and well, just not in the smaller dollar lending capacity. But we definitely brought lenders on board that are willing to work with the people. So I just wanted to use that as information. Thank you very much. Okay? Yes, sir.
Can you or do you know how long this might have been frozen?
I believe it's six years.
So I don't know without a border, but someone takes the time to write to city council or write to the government, the copy city council. I'm going to suggest something that needs to go to finance and legal refer back, but I think we should be supporting, if we believe in it, we should be supporting that and saying, especially now during the pandemic, and it's been on over a year now, no end in sight, that maybe it is time the government set up and lessons at law, we need to start supporting other businesses rather than just fishing. And I air with the banks, I air with all that. Thing is, with CEDF, EDF, and other organization that I'm involved myself with, is they come to CEDF and other organizations because they can't get it from the banks. There's obstacles. This is what would be impossible for Manitobans with smaller business to get money. So I'm going to suggest, if we don't want to do there, refer back and see if we can settle it along with them for support to open that up. That would be my suggestion.
Send it to finance? Thank you. Deputy Mayor?
I hear two different things. According to your report, they're still doing funding through other channel.
Yes.
To help out, so kind of like an information center, in my opinion. So they're not freezing, they're freezing for directly, but they're not freezing the ideology for people to get low.
That's right.
So I don't see the way on this letter to see what make the changes. Because if we say 400% freeze, then the people cannot get low, there's a problem valid. But now it's not, it turned into a different model. So in my opinion, when I look at this letter, that means the lack of information when they write this letter to the province. Otherwise, this letter would not be happened. That should be, what a differently, that's my opinion. So anyhow, I will not support this for bringing back to the leader because we already discussed this at the leader. That's why we brought you here to say, read it out to the public to see what this tour and now we're doing when we have the MVP, so thank you.
Yes?
By the border. Madam Mayor, there should never be, I've been told this since I've been on council for two and a half years. Not once did I refer, I don't care who the MLAs. It's a concern that two MLAs have got. And to refer to them right off the bat, they're MVP, I think that's inappropriate. Unless they're going to want others, but that is just wrong.
I'm sorry, I think back to MVP.
Thank you. Wondr?
Just a question on it, of the history, I know I remember some of it, but not all of it. So did they switch their model, CBF forced to switch their model because the funding froze? Or did they switch their model? You know what I mean? And then it froze.
That they basically were relooking at different, because there was so many entities out there doing lending and that, that the CEDF has taken more of an umbrella approach to this and to see how it works. And they do work with, with actually, the banks up here especially are one of the barriers. So they do work with other lending agencies that are more attuned to the north and working with the north.
Yeah, I support CDF. That's how I got started and I know I've heard complaints from other people. I'm trying to start and trying to expand and not having that avenue. It's kind of what I was saying. If you have an extra avenue, it's more the better, so I'm in support.
And like I'm saying, is what the idea is, is if people have their own ideas and that, they should reach out and let the city want to support. That's fine, thank you. Jack?
Yeah, I've heard this from another member of my constituents as well, concerned about this freezing funding. And I am actually quite surprised that funding is only for fishing in the north. Which, how much funding that requires. So that suggests we don't see that significant success from that. From my way behind others who said that this needs to change for our
They do do other funding also, it's just just a different model is the way they lose, like, let's say even our electrical vehicle stations, they have supported that. They're supporting different projects in the north that will move the north ahead. But like I'm saying, the reason I ask this to be brought here is that if people do have concerns because, and I've heard lots of them about not having the small personal loans, really, you have to reach out to the government and let them know what you're not happy about in order for things to change. Earl?
Well, I'm, I was a user of CEDF. When I shared my business, very good, the only one. I hear you talking right now of other people loan, they mean, banks around here, you may not know money right now. And that, I know, because I'm in the process of it myself, and we got our job coming from you. Now where do we go? You know, you want a smaller 950, you go to the the no potential development. Right? That's the 950, well, you know, there's a lot of good businesses around here to start. And we got nobody up here to start. So I don't know why they're just doing the fishing. How many people fish these days?
Actually, more than you would, more than you would
Commercial fishing?
To multi-million dollar industry.
Is Thompson?
Yeah. It's a constant area, yeah.
Well, you know, I don't see it. Where's the fish going? I got order my pick for later Wednesday.
That's where, that's where
So, you know, it's more business in the north in fishing.
And that's what I'm saying.
We got to get this, this government and CEDF back to help them, the northern people.
So write a letter in lobby, sir.
Right?
Write a letter in lobby.
Give me a chance, we have benefits. Right? Yeah, we need them, the loaning people money to invest in the community. And we're not getting it. We can't give it to the banks. Because they won't let you, you know, especially businesses like mine, they're not going to let me right now, even though I got a million dollars. Right? They're not going to let me a $500,000. So it's telling us, you know, we sit here in the north and we're being told that we can't get money. And she sits up here, she says, all these other lending institutions, well, where are they? I would go see them if I knew where they were. I've been to them. Only bank that every dozen ain't gonna meet is the Zinnabon. I went into a bank, asked $50,000, they turned me down. Right? I went over to Zinnabon, asked $50,000, same, next day I had the money. But that's what we need. And CEDF is the company to spring business in Thompson ahead.
And you can still go in there, sir, and make an appointment and they can give you an appointment and depending on what, so
Been there too, and got turned down. Right?
Well, that's the matter of just lobbying, okay? Anybody else? Thank you. Good conversation, everybody? 8.1 a resolution to approve variation order number 996-2021, variation order. Okay. 996-21, as 44 station road, lot 11 slash 14, block 39, plan 741 PLTO North Division. Resolution 2021 057. Moved by Councillor Pro, I believe, the Councillor, seconded by Councillor Fountain. Whereas the city of Thompson is in receipt of a variation order application number 996-21-44 station road, block 11 slash 14, block 39, 10741 PLTO North Division 2, increase the building height from a maximum height of 5 meters 16 feet to 7.85 meters, 26, 25.77 feet for an accessory building in a commercial downtown revitalization zone, C-dPR. And whereas under the provisions of the Planning Act, a public hearing has been held to hear representations for and or against the variation order. Now therefore be it resolved that council approved variation order number 996-21-44 station road, lot 11 slash 14, block 39, plan 741 PLTO North Division 2, increase the building height from a maximum height of 5 meters 16 feet to 7.85 meters, 25.77 feet for an accessory building to a commercial downtown revitalization zone, C-dPR. Administration?
Yeah, so this is the resolution to accompany the public hearing that was just held. As was stated, there was no objections or no supporting at that hearing. And administration hasn't received any outside of the hearing. And administration hasn't received any outside of the hearing either. This was reviewed at the development review committee and recommended for that council should support and approve the variation for this building.
Thank you, cost approved.
Yeah, I'm glad to see another building permit being pulled out, it's been kind of a regular thing this year, which is nice. And another investment in our city, so definitely approve of this, we very discussed it at the D R C, so.
Any other council's comments? I think this is a good news story, shows the investment in business in Thompson moving forward and. Like to congratulate them, so call for the question, all those in favor? Harry.
Counsel Valentino has it.
Counsel Valentino, sorry.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Smoak, I was just gonna abstain because the audio wasn't working for the public hearing. So I missed that entire part of the meeting, so I just wanted to abstain from the vote because I wasn't part of that.
Okay, please note that Costa Valentino's abstained from the voting. One, eight point two, a resolution to approve the tabulation of crisis. For R F T number one oh four two one for the purchase of coal patching material. Resolution two zero two one, zero five eight, moved by Deputy Mayor Wong, seconded by Counsel Ellsworth. Yet resolved that council approved the recommendation of the purchasing agent. And award the purchase of coal patching material to Western Asphalt Products for their tendered price of a hundred and two thousand dollars, one hundred and forty. Hundred and two thousand, one hundred and forty four dollars with additional taxes as per tender file number one zero four two one, administration.
And there was one response procedure tender, and they're just like savings from the previous years.
Deputy Mayor Wong.
They've been having some. Good pricing from our tenant, so I think, I still think we should do better. Maybe we have to get a better, not better, tougher to negotiate in council, this is a good news. At least we save some money, mother, I'll support this definitely.
Thank you, any other conference? Counsel Ellsworth.
Yeah, the, the, the last price for the asphalt was two point nine point six three per ton and the current price threshold was two point seven. So it's encouraging, I wish lumber would come down with asphalt, that would be a lot better shape. And, and secondly, again, I mean, it's, it's, it's a hundred plus thousand, but it's something else we probably could explore ourselves when we had our own actual time. But I will also support the resolution.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, my dear, I just want to clarify this from the administration. From the reading note, the quota warranty is for, of one year, is that mean they want years to one year for a product? So i- if that is the case, I don't know yet, okay, but if that's the case, how they warranty with me. Throw the coal mix into a water power and then wash it up in two hours. How they warranty that, I just, I'd like to understand the part.
I have no details on that warranty.
Please find out, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other conference? Call for the question, all those in favor? Eight point three. Is a resolution to approve the sale of land in development agreement between Koma Properties Limited and the city of Thompson. For. Lot. Eight block. One plan four three three nine two P L T O. Resolution two zero two one, zero five nine. Moved by Counsel Bruce, seconded by Counsel McMurdo, I believe, thank you. Whereas on September third, two thousand nineteen, council passed resolution two zero one nine one three O. Approving the option to purchase. Lot. Eight block one, plan four three three nine two from Triple K Properties. And on September tw- thirty of two thousand nineteen, council passed resolution number two zero one nine. One five three, approving the assignment of the option to purchase from Triple K Properties to Koma Properties. And whereas the city is in receipt of the sale of land in development agreement from Koma Properties Limited. For block eight. Block eight, block one, plan four three three nine two P L T O. Now therefore be it resolved that council approved the sale of land and development agreement. Between Koma Properties Limited and the city of Thompson for part lot eight, block one, plan four three three nine two P L T O. Administration?
Just a friendly amendment suggestion, or at the last sentence it says part lot, it's actually full, so it's just lot eight. Um, this is, um, this has been before council multiple times, this is for the sale of land on Moth Crescent. Um, sorry, Nelson wrote, I believe, that'll be used for, um, sorry, Moth Crescent, to be used for a car dealership. So the owner of some of the land that's on South Creek Drive is going to be consolidated and converted into a car dealership. And one part of that is the land that the city of Thompson owns, so council previously approved the option to purchase. And now the development is at the point with all the drawings provided to the city to pursue it with the land sale. So that the building can start, I believe they'd like to start building later this week or into next, this coming month. So it's in front of council for consideration for sale, this had been reviewed at development in the past. And had been recommended for, for the sale of that one.
Counsel approved.
Again, we've been dealing with this for a while, I'm excited to see this move forward and another, this is a huge investment in Thompson, so. This will be nice to have. I'm in support of this.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor.
I just want to clarify this, originally approved the sales to Triple K property, right, right? But it just mean changing, it's not like speculation, am I right?
Oh yeah, so the, the original was the option to purchase, which gave them the rights to the land. Um, until the development had been assigned, there is an original corporation that approached the city. But a new corporation was formed for this particular development.
Yeah, I just want to clarify this, so it's not like, look like a speculation from one to the seventh.
If I might add, Counsel Longmark has just joined the meeting.
Welcome, Brian. Uh, any other? All the question, all those in favor?
Counselor Longmark's vote. Counselor Longmark's vote. Kathy, or Counsel Valentino voted, but we didn't get Counsel Longmark's vote.
Counselie Longmark, I can't see the TV, are you in favor of this sale?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yes. Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Six point four, is a resolution authorizing administration to enter into a purchase and sale agreement. Between the province of Manitoba and the city of Thompson. For lots nine to eleven, block one seventy five, plan eight four seven P L T O, North Division. Four seventy four, four ninety four, and five oh four Princeton Drive. Resolution number two zero two one zero. Moved by Counsel Ellsworth, seconded by Counsel approved. Whereas the city of Thompson. Is in receipt of a purchase and sale agreement from the province of Manitoba for the purchase of lots nine to eleven, block one seventy five. Plan eight four seven P L T O, North Division, four seventy four, four ninety four, and five oh four Princeton Drive. Now therefore be it resolved that council authorized administration to enter into the purchase. And sale agreement between the province of Manitoba and the city of Thompson. For lot nine to eleven, block one seventy five, plan eight four seven P L T O, North Division, administration.
So this is a long-term project of councils to establish a sobering center in the city of Thompson. Um, with the cooperation of council or the lobbying efforts of council, along with Minister Cullen and now Minister Freezen and their staff. Um, Manitoba has offered the former U C N campus to the city of Thompson. With, with the understanding that building five in the middle would become a part of the new or the, the home of the new sobering center. And that would go with the two point eight million dollars that the government, Premier Paulister's government has committed. Towards establishing a sobering center in the city of Thompson. So this is one of two agreements that the province would like council to enter into this evening for the purchase and sale of the. Of the land and receipt of the buildings.
Counsel Ellsworth.
Yeah, I mean, we, we spend a lot of time talking to sobering center. We all know, nobody in Thompson is not aware of the issues that we have in this city when it comes to downtown and the other areas. Uh, we ask the administration to work with provincial government, see what we could do. Uh, there is certainly some concerns around these properties, I think we all have those concerns. I took advantage of the tour that was offered, uh, along with the city manager and a couple more council, we went through those buildings, in fact. Uh, these buildings are actually in pretty good shape compared to what I would have expected. I think it's a good news story and I think that at the end of the day. If we do it right, uh, and do this, work along with the province to do it. Uh, hopefully in time, we, we talk about twenty two percent of our budget consists of our C and P, the thirty eight officers. If we do it right, possibly we should reduce some of those costs because they're not going to be doing a lot of that in the next few years. So certainly, I am prepared to support it at the first stage because when I was first supporting it, it's not going to go anywhere.
Thank you, any other concerts? Counsel McMurdo.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Smoak. Um, first, I'd like to commend the hard work put in by the ministry on this project so far. And like, I recognize, like everybody, that a sobering center is, the goal is to alleviate the burden on our police, our E M S services and. And the corresponding, uh, stress that those put on the budget. But I'm, I'm concerned that all three of the properties taken at once will present considerable risk to the city. On top of the lost tax revenue, we'll have to absorb the utilities expenses. And I'm a little concerned as well with the dramatic increase in construction costs that have went on as a result of COVID. That, that are quotes that we received might be, might not be accurate anymore. The two point eight million, once we sign the agreement, we are stuck with these properties without adequate mon- money to either retrofit them or renovate them. Living my thoughts.
Any other concert?
Think about it, I go use the same comment I made earlier. It sounds like they're giving to us, in my opinion, we bought that building, we bought those three buildings. Back in the day, we contribute six point six seven five million dollars to the new U C N. For the return, they give us all three, all one. So we stuck with the liability, it sounds like a good deal when they give it to us, but with the liability. As our counsel. What you call the, the model, mentioned about the, the cost of running it. And I'm more, I'm more supportive if I see more concrete plan, which is like, let's say. From the administration based on the data, if you do this kind of sobering center. I pretty much believe this is copying the mainstream, it will affect the model. Because I'm bringing people in so the Medicaid, the R C M T job can take care of the social issue. So I like to see a proposal come from either administration or the expert to say, if we take over the two, the district building and. But if one did not sobering center, this is what we can, we can look into the same. Maybe we can cut five to ten R C M P because of the social issue, now we divert to the sobering center. And all this funding and that funding, so I'm a, I'm a number person, if I can see all the number in front of me to say. This is a good deal based on all this direction, this is what we are looking to future. Then I can see some light in the tunnel, but right now it's all based on ideology, yeah, sounds great. But I still don't see a concrete plan, and one, one thing I know for sure, we are getting. Blue, uh, brand new blue every year, which is called property tax on this, the province. For this three building, once we own it, if we don't have any good plan or anything. Moving forward, we stop with that with the liability. And I will not support it, and I would like to offer all the colorful.
Counsel approved.
Uh, I am in support of this, I, I hear the concerns definitely, uh, but. I, I'm on the more optimistic end after touring them that it would not be hard to unload these buildings if necessary. Um, they're actually not that bad a shape and we are also getting two point eight, if I'm mistaken, Anthony, twenty.
The council will be in receipt of two point eight million dollars, that money can only be sent on a sobering center portion.
Right, so we will be getting two point eight million dollar check with it. Um, and this will, I believe, help, this is a huge cry for help that we were finally answering. For our population with addiction issues, so I'm in, I'm in favor.
Thank you, is there anybody on the screen, oh, Earl?
Well, I'm not in favor unless there's a plan in place to see what's coming across the city down the road. You know, it all sounds good, and believe me, the sobering center ain't gonna say, it ain't gonna fix our problems, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, Counsel Valentino.
Counsel Valentino.
Thank you, yeah, I'm definitely going to be supporting this, I mean, it's not a secret, we have an addictions, addictions issue in our city. Um, we have issues with the rising cost of our policing, we have advocated to the province with the issues that we have downtown. We have advocated to the province about how we need help with the addictions. And this is the start to a sobering center, to a pilot project that can possibly help and be a project that could. Take over for other municipalities within our north. So I am definitely think this is a good news story and I'm definitely going to support the first step. In this city getting a sobering center and working with our partners that we have within our city. And working with other organizations that will benefit, whether it also will inspire to have another transitional housing. Or, um, an alcohol, uh, program, there's lots of options available that we can move forward with. And it's going to be a, a great thing, and I think it's something that we need and it's something that we have been telling the province that we need help with. And this is the first step, so I'm definitely in support of it, I think this is a great, good news story, thank you.
Thank you, Jeff, did you have your hand up?
I did, Madam Mayor.
I could just note that Counsel Longmark has rejoined the meeting.
What do you got? Okay.
Thanks, Mayor Smoak, Counsel Felton, uh, just one question, Anthony's. Uh, the money we've had committed is the two point eight nine, just for the retrofit, there's no operating money down the road that has been committed by the, the province or the federal.
That's part of the discussions I go for on developing a plan, on how to use that two point eight million dollars. So those are the discussions that come with the two point eight million dollars.
All right, um, left.
Yeah, I, I struggled with this as well, I mean, the points that the deputy mayor and others have made, Counsel Coleman, they're real, they're real points. But I don't think there's an option, really, to do nothing is not an option. I could think I would, I would, if I was to do a, a survey of Thompsonites. They would say that in the last few th- years that things have got a whole lot worse in our downtown area, a lot worse. As I've stated in, in other meetings, at council meetings, there's people scared to go into our stores. And yet we sit, you know, we sit back because we already don't have a sobering center, we don't have the resources. And I hear we got thirty eight police officers, but then again, I hear we're gonna punish all these people, we don't have the space to put them. So if we don't do nothing, things want to get worse. And yet at the same time, I, 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 I share all of what all the councilors are saying. Do we end up with liabilities of property, do we end up, you know, cautious if it doesn't work, it is, is a tough decision. And, and I certainly respect each and everyone's decision on this, but I gotta go with my heart and beliefs. That we have asked administration along with the mayor, and there you and I can disagree on a lot of things, I don't think this is gonna be the one. Uh, about working with the government on, on, on this type of project. And I guarantee you, if Thompson does not move forward on this project, there's other communities well and will still be in the mess we're in today. I believe there is not an option. And I would hope that things that have been stated would not happen, and I would like to see a lot more concrete plan, but here's this, I'll finish up with this, but say it. In order to do a project like that, it's hard to get our core data, which, you know, to reduce our police force by five or ten, you don't know that. It's a tough call, but over. It's a tough call, but over time if we do it and we do it right with the thirty-plus agencies that we've been working with. Surely, there's not just Thompson that got us taking this, it's many agencies. And so I believe we need to give it a chance and let's work together. And if we gotta turn around and say at the end of the day, I know, Council, what it would cost, I know that, I've read that. But at least we can say we've, we've, we've stopped crime downtown. We've helped people to get better. Right now, you go do a count, we wouldn't want down the road. I'll ask the counselors, take your time and drive around this town. You start counting. And you will get over two hundred plus people easily on the street that you see. I for one is not prepared to sit back and do nothing, and I support it.
Thank you. Counselor, come.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh. I would have the luxury of a tour idea, um, before I started my term on council, and I'm very grateful to the people who gave me that tour. They do some really good work there, and. One of the things that they had said coming out, uh, sorry, out of this tour was that. A number of people go through that program. It takes some thirty days. And the turnover from, I'm sorry, not the turnover, the change in the individual from the beginning. To the end, when they're done that process is unbelievable, according to those people, and I did see some of those people. And I would agree, it's amazing to see the trend, uh, the, the change in the people. But what was happening was these people were then being thrown out, uh, because they're into the city. Defend for themselves and try and find. Uh, their way with all of the vice going on around them and all the circles of influence around them. Uh, and the, the rate of recidivism back into alcoholism was. Um, extremely high because of the lack of transitional housing that would provide people. With the ability to get away from those circles of influence, those bad circles of influence when it comes to. Um, alcoholism. And so. When this project started, I, I was really excited because I expected we'd see something in terms of transitional housing. I don't think that that's what we're seeing here now. It may be something that we see in the future, and I'm willing to support this because that option is there. But we need transitional housing, not a sobering center right in front of a school. For me, that's uh, sending alarm bells, but still reluctantly going to support this. With the hope, uh, because we desperately need some type of housing for people. Um, that in the future, we have something really more along those lines. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Deputy Mayor?
Can you make another point about this uh, resolution? I think somehow we have had a mixed message, not mixed message, I think we debate too early for this. I think mainly this resolution, you say whether we accept two buildings, take over under the city. And one of the buildings has become a sobering center. I'm more likely to see if the profit, we do not ask for three buildings. To me, it's more. Logical to me to do this is like, we just asked for one building to do the sobering center. So that will be more feasible in my opinion, but now the province forces to take the other two, which is where absolutely no plan. And take on to the liability. So I want to make myself clear, I would definitely support the sobering center ideology. But not taking over three buildings, perhaps if one, I could support, but all three, I think is always said to read that in our part. As a taxpayer, I don't think we can afford to carry on more debt until we see some light in the tunnel. That is my two cents about this resolution. Why speak so loud and about, and I sort of recorded this. Thank you, Madam.
Thank you. Anyone else? Uh, either Kathy or Brian, one?
Yeah.
Um, yes, we've worked very hard, uh, not even just this two years in our term as council prior. Uh, to get some work on the streets done, and I think this is a very good start. Uh, there's, like I said, thirty-some partners at the table, all different entities from the community. And working with the, the people inside and outside of Thompson even so. I think uh, we have to at some point, like uh, Counselor Elsewhere says. We have to be leaders. We have to start somewhere. We can't wait for everybody else to come to the plate. So I definitely will be supporting this because just following this group that has worked so hard for the last two years. Uh, it's nothing but good times, and I think the plans for the other two buildings. Uh, with transitional housing and whatever is going to fall into place. So with that being said, I'm going to call for the vote in a reported vote as requested by Deputy Mayor Wong. All those in favor? Counselor Prue, Counselor Ellsworth, Mayor Smook, Counselor Fountain, what have we got on?
Counselor Lunnmark and Counselor Valentino.
Counselor Lunnmark and Counselor Valentino, uh, opposed. I have Counselor McMurdo, Deputy Mayor Wong, and Counselor. Over. Thank you. It's motion to carry. Good conversation, everyone. Eight point five is a resolution to authorize administration to enter into a project agreement. Between the province of Manitoba and the city of Thompson for the sobering center. Resolution two zero two one zero six one, moved by Counselor Ellsworth, seconded by Counselor Prue. Whereas the Manit- whereas Manitoba is the registered owner of land buildings and improvements. Making up the former University College of the North Polaris Campus. Lots nine to eleven block one seventy-five, planned eight four seven P L T O, North Division. Four seventy-four, four ninety-four, and five oh four Princeton Drive. And whereas the city of Thompson is acquiring the property from Manitoba. Pursuant to the agreement of purchase and sale entered into by the parties contemporarily. Contemporary with the agreement. And whereas the city of Thompson is acquiring the property in order to repurpose. And retrofit four ninety-four Princeton Drive for the use as a sobering center. Called the sobering center, which will serve to keep the public safe while reducing the burden on justice and hospital resources. Now therefore be it resolved that council authorized administration to enter into the project agreement between the province of Manitoba. And the city of Thompson for the sobering center. Administration?
So this is the second part to the agreements with the province, whereas the previous one was with this respect to the land and the buildings. This one is with respect to establishing a sobering center itself. Um, and the agreements that will be set out on how the process works. And what is expected from all parties in establishing this opening center. So it's part two of the agreements, uh, to make this project happen and to release the two point eight million dollars to start, uh, start establishing this over center.
Thank you. Uh, Counselor elsewhere?
Yeah, I, I'm not one to, to state all the points while supporting it as I did in the last resolution, so I will certainly support moving into the project.
Thank you. Council? Deputy Mayor Wong?
Thank you, Madam. So this is the program that the province expected us to go and, and. I welcome. One of the concern I have is a. If we default, the consequences under the section seven, that's the only thing I, I worry about because we're saying very clear. We threw out halfway, we fought this problem, which could be any reason. We have to pay back some of the money that we owe. So here's my, here's my uh, objection. Or opinion. So whoever support this program, the council should prepare for their consequences. That means either you have a plan to make sure it's not fail. Or you have money set aside in case it's fail. So I'm not saying, I'm not putting negative into this uh, sobering center. I'm just more like to see number in front of me to make my decision, whether it's a good deal or a bad deal. But so far, all I know is I, we are taking three building with the liability and two point eight million. I don't think it will, it will last for two years. It will, it will down to zero, and what happened after? I like to know, but I don't have any permission to speak on it. So I also record a little guess, but I mean.
Any other concerts, Counselor Fountain?
Yeah, I'd just like to add to my comments previous. Um. Uh, and point out, first of all, Madam Mayor. When it comes to taking on additional infrastructure, I have always voted against that. Uh, it's very important to me, given our, our fiscal position, that we don't take on that extra burden. That said, uh, and, and I want to speak to it about this program. Uh, I've been approached by numerous people over the term and before that term. About I'm begging, begging us to do something, and this is that something. It may not be the right thing in the end, but we've, at least we've tried, as Council of Worth has uh, as uh, indicated. And I think that we couldn't possibly uh. Look that voting public in the face without at least trying something, and I don't see any other options at this point, so. I'm reluctantly again supporting this.
Thank you.
Counselor Valentino.
Counselor Valentino?
Thank you, Mayor Smook. Yeah, I'm not going to elaborate on my past comments. I'll still be supporting this. I'd just like to know if this. Um, resolution passes, where do we go from here with this project? I'll look to administration. I'm just wondering, are we. Looking for this now to get on the table at one of our committees or with some of our partners? What is our next step moving forward? Thank you.
So currently, this has been discussed in multiple committees outside of council. The way the agreements are written, um, administratively, we'll have to get some of the paperwork done with our lawyers by the end of May. That's just the kind of background work that has to be done uh, through the legal council. Um, in terms of the organizations that are inside the community, there's already been a number of discussions about this. They've already got a preliminary framework, a few different models that they're considering, and council would get recommendations on how to proceed. From the Public Safety and Community Wellbeing Group that council has been supportive of to date. Because a number of those actors who are there would be the ones providing the services. It wouldn't be the city. Would be those organizations that have that expertise to provide the addictions counseling expertise, the housing uh, expertise, mental health or whatever it is. So they would be the ones coming together, and they're already in discussions. Um, our consultants have already developed some frameworks to use, uh, but those have to be made Thompson specific. So that's kind of the next stages of where we're going. The province of Manitoba will be providing a member of their senior staff to work with ours. And as you see in the agreements, uh, using the dollars that the provinces put aside, we'll have to engage a specialist to help manage the project to keep it on track.
Okay. Any other concerts? Okay. Uh, yes, uh, and basically in our budget, we did help, we did approve uh, dollars to uh, support this project with the person there. Uh, again, I'm just going to say that I really think this is uh, going to move Thompson forward in a very positive way. So as requested in a reported vote, I'm going to ask all those in favor. Uh, Counselor Prue, Counselor Ellsworth, Mayor Smook, Counselor Fountain. How are the ones on the?
Counselor Valentino and Lunnmark.
Counselor Valentino and Lunn?
No, no, I'm asking them to vote.
If I stand their hands up, maybe.
Counselor Lunnmark is no longer in the meeting.
Okay, Counselor Valentino?
Counselor Valentino is in support.
Okay, in support. And opposed. I've got Counselor McMurdo, Deputy Mayor Wong, and, and Counselor Colbert. Thank you.
Counselor Lunnmark, can you hear us? His microphone is active, but I can't hear you.
Yeah. I couldn't for a while. I got moved it up for a bit.
Okay, he's there.
Okay, welcome back. Thank you.
I tried to put my hand up and everything.
Mark indicated to us at council earlier today that he had an accident with a concussion. He's having a very terrible time. And I'm not sure. Respectfully, if, if he's able to make some decisions when it comes to over discussing a lot of things tonight, so. He's not feeling well, and I know if it was me, I would not be on it. That's up to him. I'm just pointing this out. I'm very concerned. About his engagement, what he's, he's just not willing, he's, he's not feeling it. He had a concussion. And he's told us that, in the email, told all of us, so just making the point.
Thank you. Counselor Lunnmark, if you feel the need to leave at any time, please do so. You're not feeling well.
Okay.
Okay. Eight point six is a resolution to approve administration entering into an agreement between the Thompson Regional Humane Society and the city of Thompson. Resolution two zero two one. Zero six two, moved by Counselor Colburn, seconded by Counselor McMurdo. Bear resolve that council authorized administration to enter into an agreement between the city of Thompson. And the Thompson Humane Society for providing kennel space, feeding and watering of the animals under the city of Thompson Animal Control Program. Administration?
Uh, the agreement was requested with Thompson Humane Society. Um, it has not been reviewed uh, since two thousand and twelve, first, city first intervention agreement with them. Um, the recommended changes in the agreement benefit the Thompson Humane Society, the homeless pet owners and community. Um, the agreement was also presented to the Recreation Community Services Committee. The Finance Committee as well as the Thompson Humane Society Committee, and there was no additional um, concerns or any suggestions that were recommended.
Okay, thank you. Which calls for over?
Well, I'm in support of uh, anything to do with humane society, working out their animals that can't look after themselves. So I'm in support of whatever you need. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other concerts? Counselor elsewhere?
Yeah, I took the time to review the, the uh, agreement. I thought it was a very well job done as, as uh. As I was pointed out, it's been a long time since it was updated. And with what I seen and what I'm trying to understand, I've never been involved in that. But what I understand, it seems that we're moving forward, not backwards, and it's a good thing for the city of Thompson. So again, I certainly would support it.
Thank you. Any other?
I believe. The total amount is over fifty thousand a year, right? Not just the video one. It's like the uh, the agreement to have a rental spot. You also pay cleaning fee. So the cleaning fee a day is about four, five hundred dollars a week, sorry. Am I reading wrong? Am I reading wrong? So fifty-two weeks is talking about almost twenty thousand dollars, probably, for cleaning purpose.
I, I don't have all the dollar figures in front of me, but yes, we do pay a fat fee and when there is a, are we wait?
No, I have that in agreement, two hundred some dollars a week, Monday to Friday, weekend is hundred and eighty dollars for the weekend. So I believe it's not determined when we need it, it just. Into the agreement, so we are paying. That amount every week on top of whatever the rental, which is a night kennel for the dog. Whatever that is on top of it, am I right?
Correct.
So here's my concern. Because based on the report, last year we only have less than what, twenty altogether? So that means the rental space we've been renting for empty a lot. And also the cleaning, it is a permanent picture, which is permanent fee that they go charter. That means regardless, they clean or not, the benefit for the money. So when I look at this agreement, yeah, it's good to have someone to look after some of the issue of Thompson. But as a taxpayer, I don't see a, um, money, a value of that money based on what? If it's go based on rental, let's say we used to, we paid to, you clean to, we cut that kind of agreement, I will hundred percent support. But when we fix them out, that means to me. If let's say, I'm not saying our stuff is not doing the job, what if our animal control. Do not catch enough dog or do the duty, so we are paying a lot of money for organizations to benefit. I'm just, I, I don't know, I just look at this by my view of this. So and due to that reason, I ask for the.
Thank you. Um. Counselor Valentine?
Counselor Valentino.
Counselor Valentino?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Smook. Yeah, this is, was discussed as in the memo at a couple of the committee standing meetings, and there was no issues brought forward. It's a yearly. Uh, review, and I'm definitely going to be supporting it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other concerts? Seeing none, all for the vote, all those in that recorded as requested. All those in favor? Counselor Prue, Counselor Colburn, Counselor Ellsworth, Mayor Smook, Counselor McMurdo.
And Counselor Valentino.
Counselor Valentino, as Counselor Lunnmark on the screen.
Counselor Lunnmark is not on the screen.
Okay, and. Okay, and opposed? Deputy Mayor Wong and Counselor Fountain. Carrie, thank you. Bylaws. Tonight is the second reading of the special service levy bylaw two zero zero six dash. Resolution two zero two one zero six three, moved by Counselor McMyrtle, seconded by Counselor Ellsworth. Their resolve that bylaw two zero zero six dash two zero two one, being a bylaw of the City of Thompson. To establish a role for water storm. And sewer. Pardon me, service line maintenance. As a special service for two thousand twenty-one to two thousand twenty-five, be given a second reading. Of order administration.
Um, so council held a special, or sorry, a public hearing, I've never been eighteen regarding the special service levy on the. Service line maintenance within one meter, sorry, one meter and further from their property. And two verbal and two written objections were received at the public hearing. And then an application was sent to the board for approval and received board order E twenty-one zero three four as approval for that. Three thousand two hundred and forty-one properties are included in the special levy and it's estimated maximum amount of ninety-two to one hundred and twenty-three dollars per year on their tax bill. Currently, we are experiencing lower costs, and we know charge will be based on the actual cost, which is lower than that amount.
Thank you. Counsel McMyrtle.
Uh, thanks, Mr. Yeah, this seems to be, you know, a contentious issue, but we were circulated the an article from the citizen on council from, I believe, two thousand and five. It was a contentious issue then, and that was, I think, when people were paying for their service rates and the rate would change month to month, year to year, based on how many there were. So I think this process is better. It's a collective insurance kind of thing and for sixty or a hundred dollars, whatever it is on the year, to not have that ten thousand dollar. Repair, he slapped in the face, I believe it's a wise decision.
Thank you. Counsel.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I uh. I went through this whole thing again. We've had a lot of discussions about it. It's one of the cheapest insurance that you can buy, in my opinion. I've been buying insurance for all kinds of stuff online adult life. Secondly, I don't know too many Thompsonites, as we see the population, there's a lot less high-paying jobs, a lot less more paying jobs that could afford thousands of dollars of repairs that they add to. I think the good news story is that there's there's two parts really. With the water new renewal, we should see those costs without less breaks over time. And the second part, my understanding, I would go to Jimmy, is that if we don't have what is quoted there for water breaks, the rate is actually lower. It it can even lower than that. And so with that, I certainly will support it, because I think it is good for the taxpayers. I wouldn't want to get a bill for a few thousand dollars than a lot of fixed income or whatnot, so I think it's a good thing.
Thank you. Any other councils? Counsel approved.
Yeah, I'm in support of this also. It's it's a cheap insurance and. Saying like not everyone might have the connections or or know how how to repair these big expensive repairs, so. Just thinking of someone like my mom was retired, I don't think she would like a big ten thousand dollar bill or five thousand dollar bill, so. This is nice. It's easy to budget with them in favor.
Okay, Deputy Mayor Wong. Okay, you block his views, so.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to point out that if the city didn't have this. Quote-unquote insurance. Homeowners that have a home insurance policy do have coverage or can have coverage for a reasonable rate. Personal rate was forty-eight dollars a year. So while I I I think this is a good idea, I'll be supporting it. I think it's also important to get. Not necessarily the truth, because I'm not suggesting anyone is telling lies, but to tell both sides of the story. In that if you can afford home insurance, and you can afford forty-eight dollars, which I believe is less than maybe a million is. You can have it put on your home insurance. So this was an auction for people in the City of Thompson. I realize though that everybody goes through those steps to get homeowner insurance, and that's why I'll be supporting this.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The first meeting, I do not support that. One of the reasons is, when you look at the water revenue, we are talking about eight one million dollars. Out of the eight one million dollars, I'm sure. We can find twenty fifty thousand dollars to take care of this issue. I think somehow we are we are focusing the wrong thing about is a cheap issue, no doubt about it when you look at the number. But the real question is, as a council, out of the eight million dollars, why can't we find two hundred some thousand dollars to cover this? That's my one point. Second point is, all this document in front of me, one of the papers that came out is really struck my mind. It's about. The concern letter from the, not lot that is a document or application for the, if there's a water break. So right there, they say the city have received notice of whatever break at the address. So now they want you, the the landlord, to sign the agreement to allow the city to do a digging. But here's here's a question that I I'm so concerned about. The City of Thompson has provided a quote for excavation of ten thousand dollars. We receive a lot of complaint from the public. One of the incident, like the private contractor only charging four to five thousand, some perhaps lower. So why, why would I sit here, allow that ten thousand as a surprise tag to charge the public? That's insane. That means you pre-charge the price, which is, you expected to spend ten thousand. That's why it looks like this is value. For you to have that insurance. But if I go to the private, but also the last sentence is also very scary. They say once we dig down to the bottom, we found out it's your responsibility, so the levy kicks in. Right? If it's not, if you don't have the learning out of that, you're charging that. If you don't have, the city will take care. Why would I let you to dig down to find out for ten thousand? I can easily hire a contractor to go and take it down, and then I tell you, hey, it's the main, you take over, this is the bill. I struggle with this this ideology about this levy. Maybe perhaps a good levy for a lot of people cannot afford. But in my opinion, there's a chance here, I can afford it, but I'm putting, I'm talking about. The system is problematic to me when I look at it. So and again, Madam Mayor, I'm going to ask for a recorded vote.
Thank you. Counsel Fountain.
Yeah, actually, they were ahead of me, so you would pick me up after the.
Counsel Valentino and Counsel landmark.
Okay, Counsel Valentino.
Thank you, Mayor Smoak. Yeah, I'll be supporting this, and I always have from the start. I mean, I I similar to the other supporting comments. I think it's also important for the public to know that the municipal board of Manitoba, when they make the decision in order in the letter dated April sixth, that. We have to send in what our process is to get to these dollar amounts to get their approval. So everything that we do is approved by them before this, get the actual formal approval by them as a board. And I think it's important for the public to note that in that letter, it states that they receive no objections from the public at all. To this proposed bylaw, so I'll definitely be supporting it. I think it's a good thing for the taxpayers for the City of Thompson. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel landmark.
Yeah, as other councils have said, I'd be supporting this, and I I think everybody's got to remember that, and we we've discussed this in committee, and I know that I've said this on numerous occasions, but for. This general meeting. This is, this covers you so that you're 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 covered. There's different parts of a water break that could happen, whether it's in your home, where this wouldn't cover. And the insurance that I have on my home covers that. But from the main line to my home, this would cover that, and it it's very. Possible that the amount of a water break like this would go in excess of those things if you don't have both. So we're covering our citizens, which is from a very big expense. We're not talking about a hundred or a hundred and twenty dollars. We're talking. Like up to ten, twelve grand, or or more. So I I'm in favor of this. Thanks.
Yeah, I've kind of been swayed by Counselor, by Deputy Mayor Wong's words on this issue, and he's reminded me. That some of the weaknesses of the city's coverage on this. If you have an incident in your yard and the city's covering that, they're not going to cover any landscaping, nothing but filling the hole in the cover damage. If if it ends up being more than a meter away from your house. If in fact it ends up being closer than a meter to your house, as Deputy Mayor Wong has indicated. You're left holding the bag, and you have the city investigate that for you. Now, for me, there's holes in this program. I'm not, I'm not keen on the way it's set up. I've changed my mind, but I won't be supporting it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Counsel for Paul.
Well, I'm not going to support this. This is another tax grab for me. Five years ago, when they brought this law and before, if you had a break on your end, you pay a B five. And not everybody pays. You pay a B five. And if you're an unfortunate one, that buys beats property, and you get a bunch of breaks, well, you know, it's unfortunate. But right now, we're asking every homeowner, every business in this town, I don't know if it's covering business, but every owner, homeowner in this town. To pay an insurance debt. You know, we'll probably never use. Probably never use. You know, pay your taxes, it probably got this for our infrastructure. You know, you say it from here to there. We didn't have the choice to put the line on this line, and our line run the ground road, you got to dig up the road. We didn't have that choice, but we got to pay for the fixed road if we don't have the insurance. And to me, it's not, you know, I I'm not going to support it. It's not right. It's a tax grab. And you know, thank you very much, your mayor.
Thank you. Counsel approved.
Uh, just wanted some clarification. So on the price. Uh, when Jenny said that it might have come in lower, that's because we budgeted for ten thousand per day, but the actual cost was lower, is that right, or? How did we get lower?
Um, the the rate each year is based on last year's actual, so how much is paid in twenty twenty-one on the tax bill, it'll be whatever the cost of last year, which is. About two hundred and two thousand, which is less than what we had put in the special levy, and then it gets divided by the three thousand two hundred and forty-one properties, so comes down with the amount. Um, so usually it ends up being less, but we have to put that in the limit in the bylaw, otherwise we wouldn't be able to to recover all the costs, so. It likely be less by about sixty to seventy-five dollars for twenty twenty-one.
So it just goes, so we're using last year's data and it's going up that.
Yeah, so if our water breaks went up this year, the price could, like, I think we applied for a hundred and nine dollar rate, that just in case, we had a lot of water breaks last year. But it will always go by the year prior's breaks with what's left in the thing. So this year, the average person's going to pay sixty-three dollars is what the levy is going to be for the year, so. At five dollars a month that we're maybe helping other neighbor or friend or that that might have two or three, and I don't think that's too bad. Uh, any further counsel questions? Deputy Mayor Wong.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Final point. Another reason I cannot support it because of the business not included. Based on the resolution, based on the ideology of this, they're just digging the hole. They're not going to worry about the top, anything on top of it. Why is not covered? I've been talking about this for last time, and this time again, the business not included is so discrimination to the business, and we are not business friendly. If you want to do this levy to all of us, as a citizen of Thompson, a taxpayer of Thompson should benefit for this levy. Why are we being left out? I still cannot get answer for that. That's why I cannot support this. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Albert.
Yeah, it it's never a problem until it happens to you, until someone sends you a bill for five, seven, ten thousand, then it becomes a problem. There's a lot of people in this town, you know, you talk about, and and it's possible, I got, I got the. Water and sewer on my insurance, absolutely. But but I believe someone already said, it's a product of what would would probably cost if it did happen. So maybe I'm doubling, double, double protected. But and maybe I can afford it. I don't worry, I live, I can afford to live there, maybe I can afford it. A lot of people can't afford it. Let me tell you something else, and I'll close with this, Mayor, real quickly. If you look at it this way, we have one point four million dollars outstanding in water bills. We have millions in tax bills. Now, you start putting big bills with water breaks, because we don't have this on top of people, we're going to own a lot of property that we don't want to own in Thompson. So I think it is a good insurance. I do appreciate. And Counsel Wong, if we could, or Deputy Mayor Wong, if we could persuade this council to include business, you'd have my support on that, too, because I think everyone should be covered. But I got to do what I believe is is for the greater good, and I believe this is it. So that's my.
Thank you. Any further comments? Or anybody on the screen?
No.
That will call for a recorded vote as requested. All those in favor? So Counsel approved, Counsel Ellsworth, Mayor Smoak, Counsel McMyrtle.
Counsel Valentino, Counsel landmark.
Counsel Valentino, Counsel landmark, opposed. Counsel Fountain, Deputy Mayor Wong, and Counsel Culver. Carrie. And is that one with Carrie? We can go into resume the third reading, am I right?
That's correct. To note that third reading is automatically recorded.
Third reading of the bylaw. Two zero zero six dash twenty twenty-one. Resolution two zero two one zero six four, moved by Counsel Ellsworth, seconded by Counselor McMyrtle. Their resolve that bylaw two zero zero six dash two zero two one be given third and final reading and that it now will pass. And this will be a recorded vote. Administration, anything further? Counselors, any Counsel Albert?
No, I'm here.
Any other counselors? Comments? Okay, in a recorded vote, I'll call for the question. All those in favor? Counsel Fountain, Counselor McMyrtle, Mayor Smoak, Counselor Ellsworth, Counselor approved.
Counsel Valentino, Counsel landmark online.
Counsel Valentino, Counsel landmark, all those opposed? Deputy Mayor Wong and Counsel for over, Carrie. Okay, nine point three is the first reading of bylaw twenty eleven dash twenty twenty-one, the levy bylaw for the budget. Resolution two zero two one zero six five. Moved by Deputy Mayor Wong, seconded by Counsel Ellsworth. Their resolve that two zero one one dash twenty twenty-one. Being the levy bylaw of the City of Thompson for the year twenty twenty-one be introduced and read a first time. Administration.
Okay, so public hearing on this financial plan will be held April twenty ninth at seven PM here at council chambers. And it's due to the funds by, sorry, due to the province spending fifty. And the current levy by law has a little rate set forward for the school district, just twenty point four seven oh, and so the Thompson, the twenty-six point one five zero. And originally, it's all eight point eight zero nine. And the net increase for residential customer is two percent, and the red net increase for commercial repair is one point six four percent.
Deputy Mayor Wong.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Is the first reading required by law to to have this budget moved forward? So I'm not going to spend too much time to debate about this resolution or this bylaw. Well, I'm going to say, I'm going to make it quick and short. A lot of people expected as a chair of the finance to support the budget. But when I look at the money that we spend, this is my seventh budget. It's not like one or two. I never seen. The budget money we still is. We still budget the same amount or more every year. So I will leave it that way, and I'm going to ask for a recorded vote. Thank you.
Mayor Smoak. Your Counsel Valentino.
Okay, with her or Counsel Ellsworth first.
I'm not sure. I'm just fucking.
Okay, Counsel Valentino.
Oh, thank you. Further to what Deputy Mayor Wong was going to say, I was just going to say all.
Oh, thank you. Further to what Deputy Mayor Wong was going to say, I was just going to say all supporting the process and moving this forward to um, so that we can have a open public presentation and so that after tonight, uh, passing this, then we can be able to comment and discuss with the public to get all of their input before we debate the second and third reading. So thank you.
Thank you. Other counselors? Oh, Counsel Albert?
It's, uh, Mayor Smith, not unlike my colleagues, I'm not going to get into it very deep tonight. I have certainly prepared quite the presentation against this budget. I will say this, and this is all I want to say tonight, is that I have a hard time supporting the budget when we only use eighty four percent of the last one that we had last year. And I do understand reserves. I do understand all of that. But in a time of pandemic, I will say this very carefully. Here was an opportunity to help business and our taxpayers in this city. And in my own opinion, we turned, if we passed this budget, even at first reading, we've turned our backs on. And secondly, I went through my, all my notes last night from the last budget. We got time. We got time counselors. If we was to turn this down, we got time to come back and make some changes to benefit the taxpayers of Thompson because the last time I know what I had to do with COVID, I knew what I had to do with pandemic. But our first reading last year was the second meeting in May and then the third or the, the last of May, we passed the second and third reading. So I would hope that our council will turn this down at first reading and send us back to fix this budget, which I think is unfair to people in Thompson. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other counselors? Counsel Colber?
I agree with Counsel Ellsworth. We had such an opportunity here to help the people of Thompson in time of a pandemic. And we turned their backs on them. We turned their backs on them. I say you pass this, shame on, in a time like we are, it's no need to increase taxes. We already just, you have just passed one that's going to increase eleven. Now you want to pass another one to increase taxes. And my concern is we come in here as a council to reduce spending and this and that. And it has never been reduced in the three budgets that I've been in. It's been the same, usually thirty, thirty two, thirty four million rate. And it's never went down, but our population has gone down. And, uh, we're still spending money like crazy on things that right now we don't need. What we need right now for the citizens of Thompson is tax relief. Thank you, Your Honor.
Counsel Pro.
Um, yeah, I'm in support of this. Um, I have a different view on it. There needs to be some amendments I, that eventually, but, uh, next year. But all in all, I think we are giving a lot to our taxpayers in this budget. And we're getting a lot of bang for a buck, multiplying our money quite a bit. So investing in in later details, we'll see at the public meeting that we can, the money we're putting in, we're multiplying it. So we're making our tax dollars work for the community. And, um, it's not a perfect budget, but, um, I'm happy with it. I support it.
Thank you. New video? Counsel Paul?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I've heard things during this budget process that have confirmed my fears about the direction the city's going. Uh, in some cases, with respect to this budget, we have elements that haven't even decided yet. And yet you're asking us to vote on this. Uh, I think that's quite unfair. Uh, I can't get into it for legal reasons, but I'm, I'm pleased to say that I will not be supporting this. And, uh, I hope that, uh, we can have a serious sit down as a council and discuss where we can look to actually save some money. Uh, as I mentioned earlier on tonight, um, infrastructure costs keep rising because we keep taking on infrastructure. It's a bit ironic given that I voted for the sobriety center. Um, but there's a lot of stuff in this budget that I feel like jumpstart. And a number of other items, uh, handy transit, other issues that I feel we don't need to be uh, going down that road. So I hope the counselors will work towards getting to a better fiscal stance and, uh,
Thank you.
Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Wong?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Final point. I hope because of my consistency, my philosophy of budget, I can inspire some of my colleagues to come on my side to support me to put this back to the table and discuss again because I did approach some of my colleagues about my concern. And I'm not talking about big change. I'm talking about allocate money to a different perspective to do a better job. So I still hope I can inspire some of my colleagues that swing the ball. Thank you, Madam Mayor. You asked for a call. I did, right?
You did ask for a call. Uh, anybody else or Counsel Ellsworth?
Yeah, again, I, I echo Counsel Fountain's concerns again, like him, there's things we can't talk about at this point. But when I reviewed that budget at home over and over and over and lost sleep on it, there's things there that we're putting out there that unless the check is in my hand, it's very difficult for me to say that we should go ahead. So there's no way in good conscience of the people of Thompson that supported me individually and you as a council that I could ever support a budget like this.
Thank you. Any other counselors?
I would just like to say, uh, I think the public is really wondering now what's all in the budget because we've all just, uh, went around, but I think if everybody shows up at the Thursday, my, the reading, uh, they'll be surprised with some of the great things that are happening in this budget. Uh, we talk about being progressive and then we sort of shirk and shrink back. And I think it'll be up to all of us. We're got, there's two more readings, uh, to have this. And I really, uh, in my mind, uh, I've talked to people that have, have come to me that have expressed concerns that they've heard from other counselors. I just assume wait till the public had the presentation for the vote and come back here to discuss it. And I, again, I would like to thank administration and city councils. I thought it was a tough budget. We had a, a tough time. I'd like to thank soul for the time and care that was put into this budget. Uh, so with that being said, uh, little call for a reported vote. All those in favor? Counsel McMyrtle, Mayor Shook, Counsel Pro.
Counsel Valentino, Counsel Lumark.
Counsel Valentino, Counsel Lumark opposed. Counsel Fountain, Deputy Mayor Wong, Counsel Ellsworth, Counsel Colber is carried. Thank you. Oh, and now it's a reported vote. Angie, do you have everybody? I apologize for not saying that. So Thursday, the twenty sixth, seven PM, please register, four, six, seven, seven, nine, three. If you wish to come and see the budget in person, it will also be as the council meetings are on Zoom. And will people have a chance to make comments when they're on Zoom or not? Yes. So if you, if you phone in, uh, there will be an ability for you to have your questions answered.
I would just, yeah, then note when they register that they would like to speak.
Yeah. Okay. Anthony, just when you do register, make note that you would like to speak at this if you're on, on Zoom. It'll be over. Okay, uh, next. We have the first reading of bylaw two zero one two, two zero two one. It's a zoning bylaw amendment for accessory buildings. Resolution two zero two one zero six six, moved by Counsel McMyrtle, seconded by Counsel Fountain. Here resolve that bylaw two zero one two, two zero two one, being a bylaw of the city of Thompson to amend the city of Thompson zoning bylaw eighteen ninety one dash two thousand twelve as amended, be introduced and read a first time. Administration?
This is a bylaw amendment, uh, designed to identify or to resolve an issue that's been brought up through the development review committee. Um, when the new bylaw or the newish bylaw in twenty twelve was brought in for zoning, uh, there were changes made uh, to the accessory building side yard requirements, uh, increasing it up to six feet. Uh, and the addition, uh, the issue that's been raised since then is that the way that a lot of the yards in Thompson were laid out, it's almost impossible to meet that requirement when building accessory building, namely a garage, which means virtually every week there's two to three garages being brought forward for accessory building very variations to reduce the side yard usually down to about three feet. And that's actually what was done in the previous bylaw. So in a way, a, a problem was created by the new bylaw. And the recommendation is to go back to very similar language as to what used to be in the previous zoning bylaw to allow developments to happen more easily, uh, based on the, the way that the lots have been laid out in the majority of the city. Um, so this has been through the development review committee. It's also been reviewed by the, uh, planner for the city of Thompson at the province. Um, and it's recommended for, for first reading, uh, this will make, um, development of accessory buildings, namely garages, a lot, a lot faster and smoother.
Thank you. Uh, we'll go to Counsel McMyrtle this time.
Yeah, thanks, First Book. Uh, yeah, I think it's, it's good if it will reduce the amount of variances we're having to grant if it's just kind of rubber stamp. And give people a little more discretion on they want to develop their properties and invest in.
Counsel Paul?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. This came up in, in, uh, in interview. Uh, and we discussed it at Mike's, uh, myself as well, as the members that sat there all agreed for the most part on this. And, uh, I certainly believe that when you buy land and you pay taxes on it, you should be able to use it. So uh, this didn't go as far as I, I wanted personally, but it certainly was a step in the right direction. So I'm happy to support it. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel, uh, Deputy Mayor Wong?
I think this makes sense to me because I just use myself as an example. My garage is not even six feet apart when I bought the house and lived there. So for me to do that, comply to the law, I had to chop my garage to two more feet and four more feet. So this is more consistent. I like that changes. Thank you for these, uh, recommendations and I will support.
Any other comments? Anybody on the screen?
Nope.
It, uh, it was actually a very good recommendation because it, uh, does fulfill a lot of the needs of people are coming forward with the variation order. So thank you very much. That one for you. Open the questions. All those in favor?
How about those?
You know this.
Yeah. You know, I must carry.
Conductor, this is the meeting plan. Are you, uh, the mayor's report on, uh, April the thirteenth, uh, I attended the AMM mayor's release and, uh, CAO's, uh, virtual meeting. Uh, that afternoon, I met with Mark Matisiak along with Counsel Ellsworth. We attended, um, a number of seminars, seminars on virtual AMM spring convention, April fourteenth to the sixteenth. Uh, I attended a chat presentation, uh, from the winter games. So it's Murray Kissick on April twenty first. He gave us our last ten thousand dollars from, uh, the two thousand eighteen winter game. So we are now in, uh, in the seat up. So the games have been fully concluded. And on, uh, Thompson Community Development Board meetings, we were held on April fourteenth, fifteenth and twenty second. And then on April twenty third, uh, Anthony McGuinness and myself, uh, met with Tara Ritchie from Dalla. And on April twenty fourth, there was a walk-in vaccine clinic at the TRCC. And it was very close to two hundred vaccines given out, which in a bear with no notice in a very short time was really good. One of the biggest complaints I heard was that we had people coming in that were under the age of thirty or fifty and they couldn't get them. And just so you know, the province changed that today. As now today, everybody in the north eighteen and older is eligible to make an appointment for their vaccine. And I recommend everybody do that, uh, get us immunized. Also today, it was mentioned that today is National Immunization Awareness Week. Now that normally is just making sure everybody's up to date on their, uh, childhood immunizations and that. I think this year with, uh, the COVID vaccine, I think it's that much more important that we really celebrate this week. Let's, uh, see how many people we can get vaccinated. And as usual, I just want to close with, uh, the variants are in the north. Uh, there's still a lot of COVID cases. Very important to wear your mask, self distance, stay home when you're sick. And, uh, just follow the protocols, uh, safe gift, don't shop unless you need to. And now today it is back to no fit, no visiting in your homes and that. So that is more, there'll be more coming out. We'll get the full rundown tomorrow and it all takes place at twelve oh one uh, midnight. So follow your health orders, read the rules. And we are lucky that businesses are still able to stay open at their twenty five percent capacity. And in order for them to stay open, we have to follow the protocols, keep them safe, keep us safe so that we can keep the businesses in the north open. Thank you. With that, I'll go to anybody else that has come to this, Counsel Pro.
Well, I just wanted to say I've noticed a lot of people picking up garbage voluntarily around town. It's really nice to see some city pride and keep it up. And a few truck pulls I seen. So it's good to see.
Yes, it is. It is, it is great to see starting and we will be, uh, laying out the, the city plan in the next short period. Counsel Ellsworth?
Yeah, I, uh, just the, uh, mayor alluded to, I did attend three out of seven seminars. They were good. They're very good seminars, great for professional development. I look forward to, to when we do the assessment on our CAO because that was one of them was really education for a council to understand that. The policing costs that we, we always talk about, that was another good seminar and leaders don't arrive. Boy, that's a good one. I could speak for hours on leaders don't arrive. So there was a lot of good, uh, seminars. And I would like to encourage my fellow counselors, you can go on AMN website and there is a little bit on each one that you could actually read about. And hopefully in the future, you would look at doing some of those because enough is where I work at council. And I think if I'm not wrong, it only costs twenty five dollars. I'm not sure if that was for all of the seminars or each, but very, very cheap to do compared to having to travel down to Winnipeg or to, to a city of, like, larger cities. So I was glad and regardless of cleanup, let me tell you, I, I toured this whole city with some people last week. From the industrial to the train station all around town. Uh, I think we're about three hours for sure. The amount of mattresses that I see was unbelievable. I did take pictures. So I've never just looked at it, took pictures, sent them to public works, uh, chair and others. And now this budget passes, I suppose there'll be a mattress on every street because they won't be able to afford to bring it to the dump. They'll have to pay the property guy. So hopefully we can get a message out. I would ask that true, true to chair, that we get a message out to Thompsonites. We can't have mattresses being dumped on streets or anywhere else. And if they can't afford it, maybe they ought to speak to someone at the city and see what, what we can work out to help them. Because I'll tell you, when you, today I came home, I think we just ate from the water drink plant. There was a mattress sitting right on the main road there. And I'll tell you, for me, there's not much pride in our city. When you see that happening, there's actually more and more. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Paul?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd just like to take the opportunity to, uh, welcome Dr. Hudson Ripton into, uh, Thompson. She's set up a permanent, uh, location now at the Riverview Lodge. I, uh, I'm very, very happy on behalf of pet owners in the city to welcome her here and, and very happy that we also have the local service as opposed to, you know, looking at potentially eight hour drives to get to care for her. Thank you very much to her and, and welcome to the city of Thompson.
Thank you. Uh, lots of good news stories, lots of building, lots of happening in the city. So, uh, you know, let's, uh, get the spring clean up, cleaned up and, uh, for something we can be proud of. I saw some, uh, children there today. Just over here by, uh, east of, by the train station, we're starting to clean up. And I saw Walmart staff were actually out the other day and had a cleanup day on Earth Day there. So, uh, let's keep the, the good work going. And, uh, thank you. And we'll see everybody in, in two weeks. It'll be May already. So, well, for German. Counsel Pro, Counsel Colber, all in favor?